All right, we're going to get going. Good morning, everyone. Let's please stand and have a prayer and a pledge of allegiance. Heavenly Father, we come to you this morning grateful for your blessings on Titus County and grateful for a chance to gather together as elected officials and department heads to make decisions. We're thankful for a successful budget year and for keeping this county financially strong. We thank you for our personnel, especially Auditor's Department, that gives us the information that we need and helps us to make these decisions and make those decisions a lot easier. We thank you for all of our first responders. We thank you for each department board that contributes efforts toward this county and is fiscally responsible. We just thank you for the taxpayers of this community that support the operations of this county. We just pray for your blessing upon today's meeting and the various subjects that we will discuss, give us the wisdom we need to understand, comprehend, and make decisions on those. We just, again, thank you for the beautiful day and the change of the season and the cooler weather, and we pray in Christ's name, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, welcome, everyone, to our final meeting for the month of September. Today's the 27th of September, 2021, just after 9:00 a.m. We're meeting just for one of our regular, or what we call the special meeting, since it's the second meeting of the month. Item number one is our public comment time in accordance with Texas Open Meetings Act. Anyone want to address the court on a non-agenda item? Marcus, why don't you go ahead and share with us what you've got? Make sure that mic is live first for me. Very good.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners. Representing a couple voluntary fire departments, I know y'all all know who I am, but this year we're up to get the money to buy the, a new cabin chassis for a fire truck. And looking for those, we're unable to find a truck locally or anywhere else for under $50,000. We're just wanting to know if it's okay if we look into some used trucks. We have found a used truck that's about five years old with 100,000 miles on it that's closer to 40,000, but the new trucks. The only thing I found around here is one that's non-four-wheel drive for 42,000, 41-something. We found a single rear wheel, one ton, which not really going to be what we need to use in the fire industry and later in its life, it would not be able to be used for a dump truck, I don't believe. So it's about 42,000, 43,000. So we're just wanting to know if it's okay if we look into buying a used truck.
And when you say you hadn't been able to find a new one locally, how local are you limiting yourself to?
When I say local, I'm talking Mount Pleasant. I have found, the only thing I had found close is Texier Cana. I've talked to people in Texier Cana, and I talked to one in Dallas. Dallas, $53,000. Texier Cana's between 50 and 52,000 for a four-wheel drive cabin chassis truck.
Is that what the stickers on these are, or are they adding that much to them?
That's what's on the sticker. I found one over the weekend, said it was 49,000, so I run the Texier Cannon, looked at it. That sold for an ambulance body only. I don't know why they're advertising it that, but the one just like it that we need's $50,000.
What did we spend last year, do you remember?
Sir, I don't. Argue, go bid, I don't.
Was it, was it upper 30s? Do you happen to remember?
It was upper 30s.
Was it above 35?
It took, like, 14 months to get it. It took a very long time for it to come in.
Okay. I can give you my personal quick answer is, I'd rather spend 50 than I'd rather spend, than spend 40 that we spent last year to get a new one. And we can ship a truck from Oregon for less than $3,000. I mean, we can expand that search out if there's something out there. Now, if this is what the new normal is, as far as what's on the sticker, you know, I don't know if, you know, in other words, are we dealing with them just bumping up the price because of the shortage? That part I can understand. But if the, if the sticker on these things is going out of sight now, we may have to adjust our, our target.
Right.
But let's also, I mean, let's figure out a way to utilize some kind of service. I mean, you've got some, a lot of companies, I would think, that specialize in trucks like this as opposed to a local dealership.
McLarty Ford does, I don't know how many ambulances a year, but they have a ton of those box vans and vans for ambulances, so I'm going to say they're probably going to be pretty close on price as far as, because they buy so many of them.
Okay. Well, again, to spend that kind of money on a vehicle with 100,000 miles would be ludicrous.
I agree with you.
I wouldn't support something like that. Again, I'd much rather find a way to find another $10,000. Do you know what we budgeted for it?
Forty.
We did budget 40, okay. I'd rather find another $10,000 and hope that this is an anomaly.
And I'm confident if we had, if we got another $10,000, we'd be able to find a truck that we could do that with.
Well, let's expand that search. I mean, if, literally, if you have to go 800 miles away, we can have vehicles shipped that, and we don't want that cost to be too ridiculously high, but let's see if we can utilize services of somebody that might can track a truck down. Now, if that's the new price, it doesn't matter if we buy it, you know, in Nebraska or buy it in Houston, it's going to be that price, I guess. I don't know. I don't know anything about this market.
Okay.
But I do know that there are some heavy-duty truck specialty businesses that may or may not be brand-new car dealerships, they probably are going to be. Let's, let's talk to them and find out what's the reality. Is this what it costs? Is this what it's going to cost a year from now because of all the factors that are contributing? But let's, let's do that before we go spending a lot of time finding a used one.
Okay.
Now, maybe there's some, some used piece out there that's just an oddball that we might get lucky on, but if we're buying stuff that's half-worn out...
I agree, sir.
Just, just to stay at 40,000, I don't like that.
Okay.
One, one thing you might do, Marcus, is put out a, put out a RFQ for, a quote on one and send it to a lot of the, I, I've got an address for Chevrolet dealer in, well, there's two of them actually, one in Fort Worth or Dallas area and another one back down south down here. I can't remember exactly where it's at, but I've got that, I think, at the office. And you might call those people, they, they, that was where, I think the last one that we went through was, was through them.
Okay.
And that was where I, what I put out for my pull truck that I bought year before last, so.
Okay.
I'll, I'll try to get you some of those names and I'll tell you.
That'll work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Marcus.
Any other public comments at this time? Item number two, considering possibly approved minutes from two weeks ago, our first meeting of the month.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion, Commissioner Parker.
Second.
Second Commissioner Parchman. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
How about a report from Commissioners regarding roadwork status? Commissioner Parker?
We finished up seal coating. I want to thank all the other precincts for helping us and all we finished up in our area out there. Week before last, we done County Road 40, 3155, 4315, and 4240. And that 4240 was the one that, that the unit system, when the unit system was in, they went in and scabbed that road all, all the way through. And after the winter we had, it had started cracking and getting potholes and all in it, and I'm afraid if I didn't get it sealed, that it was going, going to, I'd lose it. So we went ahead and sealed it this year, and so that finished up all of our seal coating for the year. I'm getting ready to call Chris. We've got the machine cleaned up that we had leased, and I'm getting ready to send it, call them and send it back, back in where we don't get another charge on it. It's due the, I think it's the 9th of, of October is when we've got it to them. So I'm getting ready to call him this week and tell him that they can come get it and that we're through with it. Got word last week from RB Everett about our machine, and they said that, that they've got everything ordered, but they've still got several of the parts that have not come in, and they can't tell me when, when they'll get them in. So I told them, I said, "Well, we're through seal coating, so, I mean, don't, you know, don't let up on it, but just soon as you can, can get it to let me know on the, you know, when they think the parts will get here and all." He said that they had everything ordered and that, that they'd be here whenever. He said, "I can't tell you when, Jimmy." Anyway, that's, that's the situation with it right now, so.
Everybody's through seal coating for the year?
No, I got a road right now, we're tearing up. I'm hoping the weather will hold up. It is cold, so I'm hoping that more...
We hadn't totally cleaned up the truck or anything, but if...
And I think I ain't...
If you're going to do it, Jeff, we probably need to get on it before we send that thing back, because I don't know when we'll get ours, so.
Absolutely. We've got it rented through when?
I think it's October the 9th, which is next week.
I think it's the 7th.
Is it 7th?
Uh-huh.
It's one of those days unknown, but...
Is that feasible?
Well, if it's not, I could hold out and wait, you know, hopefully not, wait till the motor back up, the vehicle will back, so I mean...
Anything else? Commissioner Fitch?
All right, we went out and chipped seal a couple days in Precinct 4. We been repairing some soft spots on 1070, and we did some ditch work also while we're working on 1070. And on 2120, County Road 2120, we're working on a big drainage issue there, ditch project to get that draining again, keep the water out of the road, and we putting, replacing two culverts in that area, about halfway down 2120. We've been side cutting some trees in the area, and we're mowing our last cutting for the year, and that's what's going on.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Parchman?
Well, we helped Precinct 4 finish up chip sealing. We scabbed over County Road 1740 and 1745 with oil sand, and we have started redoing County Road 1535, hoping to chip seal it when the time comes.
Okay. What kind of length is that?
Sir?
Well, how long, how much are you talking about?
Probably, I'm hoping within a couple of weeks. It's about a three-mile stretch.
Three mile? What will that take? How many days?
Well, I mean, to be ready, it's going to take at least 14, 15 days, maybe, maybe not that much, it kind of, here's and there's.
All right, thank you. Update on Sugar Hill Fire Department is number four. Who wants to talk to us about Sugar Hill and tell us how things are going? Assistant Chief, right?
Yes, sir. Assistant Chief Colton House, Sugar Hill Fire Department. I have quite a few updates to bring to you this morning. As of our last meeting, this past Tuesday night, we have 16 on our roster. We still have quite a few applicants rolling in that we're trying to get worked on, make sure they get their background checks and their applications filled out. I've certainly been surprised by the amount of younger people we've had coming in as well that, that would like to apply.
Well, tell me that number, 16 have passed background or is six...
Correct.
16 have passed, okay.
So we do have 16 officially on our roster now. Quite a few of those, I'd have to go to our roster and check, but we actually have a surprising number of certified people as well, which I'm certainly happy about. As far as certifications go, we have all of ours we've talked to, and we had Chief McCray come out our past meeting and talk to us about the drop box training that we have with the, with MPFD. So we have everybody working on our essential classes as well as any certification classes they would like to take. We had four actually show up at our last drill night with MPFD, so we're hoping to get more to go out there as they can and more that learn about it. So we're thinking generally, as you know, four or five are going to be our normal, that show up to pretty much everything we have, or at least the percentage that we're looking for.
Who do you think those, those are? Who do you think's going to be your main backbone?
The four we had at the drill night with MPFD would be what we call Big Marcus and Little Marcus, of course, both Marcus Carlots that we have on the department, the Chief, John Grubbs, and Crystal were all out at the drill night. I myself was at work here in the 911 Center. I'm working on actually getting my days off changed to where I can make those as well. So probably those four and myself would probably be the main. Hopefully, we can encourage more to show up. But as you know, that's a reality that we're probably going to have to deal with. But I'm certainly happy that we have that many and hopefully more. As far as some of our equipment, we've gotten a majority of our hose testing done. We have left to do the hose testing on the engine, the main supply laths in the back of the engine is what we're going to be working on testing. Our SCBA's, we found that they are all in need of hydrostatic testing, which we are going through a couple of companies now to get quotes and see where we're going to get that done at. I believe we have four tanks that are hitting their 10-year mark that we're going to be looking at replacing. Let's see here. The air packs also need to be certified. We usually do that along with the hydrostatic testing if we can, if there's a company that does both. So we'll be looking at recertifying the actual air packs. We've replaced all the batteries and everything there that requires batteries. We've checked all of the trucks, all the trucks seem to be in good working order. Let's see here. The refreshers on the drop box classes, I myself have taken all the essential classes with a few extras and looking at refreshing some line classes. I've taken some of the skills tests for those as well, and of course, both Markuses have had, already had those classes and are working on doing more. So we have quite a few that are really taking to the, at least the drop box training as they can and going up and taking their skills test. So we're definitely looking at having those continue working on that.
Let's see here. So every, 16 have passed background, as compared to the five names that you mentioned, I mean, you get a feel from them as to what's their ability to attend events when, you know, you have an emergency come up?
Right. We have talked to a few to, of course, reiterate that it's not something that we take lightly and not something that you can show up to fundraisers and, you know, do the fun things. You've also got to put in the work on, on things that take a little more work. My just opinion and estimate, I would say we're probably going to have another four that would regularly show up or at least get their percentage on being considered the 25% of calls made, and hopefully that, that'll help us along. Probably the four we're looking at, Scotty Watson, he's, has quite a bit of experience on his days off, hopefully he can make some calls with us. We have a few that have been out of the department for a while that are coming back in, and once they get their classes, they should be making calls pretty regularly. I think the main thing is, is work schedules, but we do have a varying amount of work schedules that, that are all different. Such as myself, I work night shift, so any calls during the day I should be able to make, and a few others that are working night shift as well, should be able to make daytime calls. Not sure what else. Do you have any other further questions?
No, I don't.
I think as soon as we're given the go-ahead to respond to calls to people we have certified, we're, we're certainly good to go.
Okay. Are we, you have all of your paperwork and legal stuff in order, we're ready to start funding you once again?
Yes, we have the SOP that was worked on by Marcus Carlock and Wesley Vandiver. I believe we're going to try and adopt that as close as possible, so that way we can have something that closely resembles MPFD, since that's going to be most of the time who we're working with. I've looked over it myself, we have all the proper safety procedures in there, so I think we're just going to try and adopt that one again.
I haven't seen the county contract. Do you know if that's been signed or not?
It was signed with Wesley Vandiver, and I believe...
Okay.
Have you signed anyone?
Wesley Vandiver signed it.
Okay. No, no update on that, so it's, that one's valid, okay. Commissioners, any questions? You think we could get a check back up, maybe, let's say, two months from now, six weeks from now, and see how things are going?
Absolutely.
Okay, let's, let's plan on that for maybe the second meeting in the month of November. Well, you know, we, we want you to thrive, we want you to succeed, we do want to know that we've got a viable department there and we're not just cutting checks to a group of guys that have all the best intentions but limited realistic capability. And that goes with any of our, any of our departments. We understand that there are other conflicts that, you know, everybody deals with, but...
Right, and that's one thing we've tried to hit hard with our members is keeping up the contract and definitely training. We don't, we, as a matter of fact, right now, the people that have radios or everybody that's certified have taken a few classes themselves, and we've instructed everyone, if you're not certified to do it, don't go out there and get yourself hurt, just do everything safely.
Commissioners?
Sounds good to me.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number five, first of all, any, any action on Sugar Hill? How about a motion that we get a, another report from Sugar Hill at the second meeting in the month of November?
I might get motion.
And also include in there that we begin, begin their funding as the other departments now. Will you tack that on to that motion? Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay. So the motion is that we get another update from Sugar Hill in two months and that we allow their monthly fixed monies to start flowing again along with any run money that is properly reported, assuming they're in compliance with all the other requirements of the county contract, county agreement. Second? Second. Any questions, add-ons to that? All in favor, say aye. Okay, item number five, update on repairs and improvements to the Justice Center. Let me read you a, a report that I asked for from Wade Clark with Preffert. He sent me this on the 16th. The project is moving along nicely with no issues. The building has been fully insulated, and the walls have all been repaired and painted. The entry doors have been replaced. The R-panel sheeting in the gabled ends of the building have been replaced. The wood siding has been replaced where it was needed, and it has all been caulked and sealed. The new air conditioning units and duct work has been installed, and the roof leak at the main entrance has been addressed along with the concrete fill added to support the entry approach that was washed out. The hose bibs on the northwest corner and the east side of the building have also been installed. Everything should be painted or stained by the end of next week, so I guess that would have been last, last week. The next items to be completed in the next three to four weeks are gutters, downspouts, acoustic ceiling, LED light fixtures, air conditioning grills, tile flooring, and final cleanup. I would say everything is ahead of schedule at this point, and I could see completion being by the, almost hate to say these words, by the end of next month without any problems. All right, our man on the scene, what's the real story?
Well, it sounds really good, and I'm in agreement with what he said, other than the black swig, unless it started blather later in the week, they're supposed to start staining the wood and shellings and stuff, and that will shut them down from anybody going in and out of the pews for, I think he said, four days. And I don't think they're supposed to start that, but that may start next week or so. But they're, they're moving around a lot.
The woodwork that you're talking about...
The cabinets...
Yeah, I saw the stuff in Ray's office, that looked good. I assume it was to your liking, they've done it the way y'all wanted it? You're pleased with yours?
Very professional-looking cabinets, and it just, it looked good.
Okay. All right. Well, that would be great if we could get in there by Halloween, that'd be fantastic, but, you know, I know that things happen, but it sounds like the major stuff has been, has been handled.
It is, it's, every time we go over there, we just go over town, and we get, it's just looking inside, and they haven't had them complete, they've got the cement pile up until they drop the grates down coming from there. It's amazing what the system looks like up in the attic.
Yeah, I agree. There's a whole lot more there than there was before. It's going to heat and cool. Yeah, it's going to heat and cool. Yeah, I'm, I'm real pleased. I think it looks good. Anything else? Very good. Item number six, considering possibly approved, the Wood Lake Park subdivision in Precinct 2. I have not heard anything from Wood Lake Park, and I assume nobody in this audience can tell me about that. I did hear from Clint Bain, he has not received the onsite sewage plan, so I don't know if they've been delayed, I don't know, can't tell you, I'm sorry, but no one is here to speak on their behalf. So I am going to remove that from the agenda until we have a final plan presented. So I will say no action there, I'm not asking you to table, and I'm just saying I'm going to drop it for the time being. All right. Item number seven, I would like you to also table this. I may have gotten ahead of myself here when I looked at with Barbara the timeframe that was needed. As you will recall, we decided that it was better to go out and get some kind of bids to be sure that we were satisfying the necessary legal requirements of purchasing equipment that was actually priced at 65,000 despite the fact that we were getting some trade-in benefit that brought us in slightly under that $50,000 threshold. We felt like it was appropriate. And in order to get those postings done in the proper amount of time with the proper length of time in between them, we really aren't ready for today. How much longer do we need, Barbara, and should we, are we in enough of a hurry where we ought to maybe plan a meeting, you know, later this week or first of next week?
The bids are due October the 7th.
Okay.
And then we'll have the next Commissioners' Court meeting on October the 8th.
Perfect.
So if the Commissioners can make a decision at that time, I think we'll be ready to go.
Okay, let's table that, James, if you'll just roll that one over for us for the next meeting, first meeting in the month of October, so then if I could get a motion to table that.
I might get motion.
Motion by Commissioner Parker.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Parchman. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item number eight, considering possibly approved, the sale or trade-in of a Rhino shredder. We're going to see in, in number nine, the replacement for that piece, but let's properly discuss and approve the sale of a Rhino shredder. Commissioner Parchman, tell us about that.
Well, we've had this shredder all 12, 16 years. It's, it's just time to get a new one. It's wore out, it stays in the shop more than it does out in the field, and lots of repairs on it, so it's just time to get a new one.
Okay. Any idea what something like that could, could bring?
Yes, well, I've talked to John Deere about it, and they're offering for trade-in, $6,000 traded value on it. And I had also talked to Conroy's, and they offered 1,500, so quite a bit of difference there.
Okay. So you're asking, you're not sure at this point whether you're going to sell it or trade it in, you've got an idea of what it's going to be worth. As a trade-in... It's a trade-in, but you'd like for the Commissioners to give you approval to do either or?
Yes.
All right. Any questions?
I might get motion.
Motion is made by Commissioner Parker to approve the sale or trade-in of a Rhino shredder owned by Precinct One.
Second.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Now, we've got to replace that, consider and possibly approve in item number nine, the purchase of a John Deere shredder in the amount of $22,000. And that's the gross price, or that's net of a possible trade-in?
Yes, that's what the government price that they give is, $22,000. With the trade-in, the difference will be $16,000.
Okay. Not that you're going to do that, but we're going to approve the full $22,000.
Yes.
Okay. And you feel like that's the right piece, and it's a comparable piece to that Rhino?
I might get motion.
Motion to approve the purchase of a John Deere shredder for Precinct One, $22,000. That's the gross price before any trade-in possibilities. That's made by Commissioner Parker.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Fitch. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item number 10, consider and possibly approve the annual renewal, or the renewal of the annual lease agreement for the 312 North Riddle Street Building to Workforce Solutions of Texas for the period that will not come up until next March, March 1st through February 28th. And we require a rather lengthy notification from them so that we know what their plans are. And Randy Reed, the Exec Director with Workforce, says this serves as notice of intent by Northeast Texas Workforce Development Board to exercise the option for renewal for the lease agreement at the North Riddle Building for an additional 12-month lease in accordance with terms and conditions. The lease period will commence March 1 of '22 and go through February 28 of '23. How much will that new rent be? It will be calculated after we know what the Consumer Price Index escalation is after the end of the calendar year. So, this is how we always do it about this time of the year. They tell us they want to renew six months from now for their year option, and they also know that there will be a potential escalation there. And I would think with the, what's going on in the real estate market in the state of Texas that we ought to see an increase there, but we will not have that calculation until probably sometime in January. It will be prior to when that lease starts on March 1st, but it will adjust upward at that time. So, assuming you all are still happy with having Workforce Solutions as your tenant in the Riddle Street Building, I would strongly recommend that you allow them this option period.
Make it motion.
Motion's made by Commissioner Fitch to approve the intentions of Northeast Texas Workforce and to approve the renewal of their annual lease agreement as per their option to begin March 1 of '22.
Second.
Second. Commissioner Parchman, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
They are a great tenant over there, and we've had really very little problems with that building this past year. Maybe we got all the kinks worked out of it, we got the leaks addressed, and the AC systems and the toilets, and we continue to have an occasional problem. What we have the other day, we had a leak in a condensate drain that caused some water in there, but we got that cleared out. Item number 11, consider and possibly nominate candidates for the Titus County Appraisal District Board of Directors. We do this each year. This is not the appraisal review board. This is the actual Board of Directors that sets the annual budget, that hires the chief So, let me give you a little background here, tell you, reminds you who's on that board. According to Section 6.03G, each taxing unit is entitled to vote, and they may nominate by resolution adopted by its governing body one candidate for each position to be filled on the Board of Directors of the Appraisal District. The presiding officer of the governing body of the unit shall submit the names of the unit's nominees to the chief appraiser before October 15th. So, if for any reason you are not ready to do this today, we have another meeting. We just want to be sure this is all in before October 30th. The current board members are Hewland Mike Reynolds, who serves as Chair, David Greider serves as Secretary, Buddy Blue, Mike Edwards, and Steve Martin. So, we've had a couple of name changes in there over the last couple of years. It appears to me that this group is functioning well together. I don't have any new names to submit. I personally would support nominating this same group of five. You may have different idea, you may have somebody else you'd like to see on this board. You may want to completely upset the apple cart and give me five new names. If you're ready today, fine. If you're not, be thinking about this and say, hey, give me another meeting to consider these names. So, Hewland Mike Reynolds, David Greider, Buddy Blue, Mike Edwards, and Steve Martin. What would you like to do today, if anything?
Make motion. We keep them like they are.
Okay, so your motion would be to nominate all five of these guys and allocate your votes on an equal basis amongst the five? Would that be your motion? Because you can do it, you can pile all the votes on one person, or you can spread them equally among these same names.
Keep it equal.
Okay, that's Commissioner Fitch's motion, is to renominate the current board members with equal votes out of our allocation of votes.
Second.
Second. Any discussion on this? Don't want to appear to be rushing you, but we do have, we're a little bit ahead of the curve here, and we could take some more time. If you are happy with this, all in favor of approving this motion to revote the same board members in? Say aye.
Aye.
Item number 12, consider and possibly approve a second contract renewal with Appris Inc., which is the vendor that provides the statewide automated victim notification services for the year beginning September 1/21. All right, little bit of background. Statewide Automated Victim Notification Services, or we call it Savins for short. This is a entity that works together with the state to provide, just like it says, automated victim notification services. Let's say that a bad actor who's gone off to prison for an assault is getting ready to be released. This theoretically notifies anyone who was negatively impacted by that individual and says, hey, we are getting ready to release this individual. We just want you to be aware that you can, you know, you might need to be a little more aware of what's going on because the person that you had problems with in the past has now been released from jail. So, that's exactly what it is. Statewide Automated Victim Notification Services. And I don't know exactly the technicalities of how that works, how they're notified, how much time they're given, and who actually does all this, but Appris Inc. is an entity that we have completed the first contract renewal. This is not a company that we select. This is the company that the state selects, and so we have an agreement not only with the state, but we also have an agreement with Appris Inc. Each county has an individual agreement with them. So, there's nothing new here. There's nothing really that we have an option on, but we have to approve any and all contracts. And so, I'm asking you to go ahead and renew for a second year, and I'm sure if Appris continues to do work that the state of Texas is pleased with, they will continue to use Appris. But second contract renewal, and this, again, is just for one year at a time. It will end the year from now, next year, so I see no reason not to continue and go ahead and support the selection of Appris and approve another year with them.
Brian, does that cost us anything?
Does this cost us anything? It's paid for by the state, there are grant monies. Does there any net cost to us at all on this? You know, it really has just created another layer in the process in that we're contracting with two different entities. The state provides the money, they are the ones that... Do we pay Appris directly? Do we receive money and then we pay Appris?
Well, we pay Appris and then we receive the money.
Then we receive the money back? Okay.
I make a motion with approval.
Motion to extend and to enter into a second contract renewal with Appris, A-P-R-I, A-P-P-R-I-S-S Inc. That is our vendor. Motion and...
Second.
Second by Commissioner Parchman. All in favor, say aye. Item number 13, consider and possibly adopt a COVID quarantine policy as recommended by Texas Association of Counties, or TAC, related to Senate Bill 22. Let me give you a little bit of background here. This is, this is not a big new item, but it's a, and it's a tweak to an existing item. We were required by previous legislation back in June to have a policy for paid quarantine leave for firefighters, peace officers, detention officers, and emergency medical technicians. In other words, these frontline people that have the potential to be exposed while on the job to COVID at a level probably higher than most of us are vulnerable to. We're already required by these regulations to provide paid leave to any injury for this class of employee. Again, these are the frontline, first responders, firefighters, peace officers, detention officers. So, this is primarily affecting Chief Ingram's folks. The only change with this legislation is that it now allows for the reimbursement of reasonable costs related to quarantine, and that might be additional medical expenses, transportation, let's say that they had to go back and forth and/or spend the night in Dallas. In other words, we have additional expenses that might arise. We need to adjust this policy to include reimbursing them for medical treatment, transportation, lodging. Listen to tax recommendations here, because this isn't just anybody that can lay down a hotel bill and say, okay, I want to be reimbursed. Here's how the process is going to work. TAC says, let's require each affected employee to first file a work comp claim, workers' compensation claim for this. Then TAC will determine whether or not the event is work-related. TAC Workers' Comp Division will do all of the investigation, thus relieving Titus County from having to conduct the investigation. The employee will need to file a first report injury with their department's elected official. And so, in that case, that'll be Chief, or excuse me, Sheriff Ingram or his assigned. That form should be then forwarded to the auditor's office, who will then forward it to TAC. That's how the process begins. The report is made here locally in their department. It ultimately flows through the auditor's office and then to TAC. TAC will then conduct an investigation, because the policy states that off-duty exposures will not be covered under this policy. In other words, if they caught it from a family member, or they caught it at a family gathering, or church, or a party, that's not covered. We're talking about on-the-job exposure. If TAC finds the quarantine is work-related, the employee may submit receipts to their department head. Commissioners' Court will ultimately need to officially approve all reimbursements with regard to these costs. Please note that Sheriff Ingram would like to personally conduct the investigation, and then that will be acceptable as well, but TAC recommends that an outside consultant conduct the investigation. I assume you're okay with that. No, but he's got people working for him that are... And I understand where you're coming from. Our hope is that we don't have anything here, but we need to be prepared for it should there be a situation come up.
Yeah, so, so far, the two employees that got the, has had COVID, I think we've had a couple of them that had to go to hospital, and I have, I have had COVID that I know of. They've had that, there's some kind of treatment they'll do, keep them one night and then release them. We've had a couple for that, but as far as extent stand out, we haven't had that, so we've been fortunate on that, and everybody just has to...
And again, we hope that, we hope that we want, but let's figure out now what we're going to do if and when it comes. Austin McCarty is with, is with TAC, and he's the expert on the use of ARP, our American Rescue Plan funding. He thinks the cost for the items described above will be appropriate to use those ARP funds should these come up. Keep in mind, this will not open another source of funds. Instead, this will just be an acceptable use of the funds already appropriated for Titus County. So, let me hit the high points of this suggested policy here. Titus County shall provide quarantine leave for firefighters, peace officers, detention officers, that's our jail workers, emergency medical tech. So, here, we're talking about peace officers, detention officers is who we employ. If they're employed by Titus County and ordered by a supervisor or health authority to quarantine and isolate due to possible or known exposure to a communicable disease while on duty. A detention, here just goes through the definitions. The detention officer means an individual appointed or employed by the county as a jailer or other individual responsible for the care of those incarcerated. A peace officer means an individual described by Article 2.12 of the Criminal Code Procedure who is elected for, employed by, or appointed by the county. Eligible employees who are on qualifying paid quarantine leave shall receive all employment benefits and compensation, including leave accrual, retirement, and health benefits for the duration of the leave, and if applicable, and if, here's the key part of this, and if applicable, shall be reimbursed for reasonable costs related to the quarantine, including lodging, medical, and transportation. An employee on qualifying paid quarantine leave will not have their leave balances reduced. In other words, we're not burning up their vacation pay or their sick pay. Any employee seeking reimbursement under this policy should consult first with the sheriff's assistant. Off-duty exposures will not be covered under this policy if it is determined to be an off-duty exposure. So, and they may have an idea and may not even bother the sheriff, and they say, hey, unfortunately, I caught it.
I'm not sure how they're going to accomplish that, determine if it's off-duty or holding.
I don't know either. That's why I'm kind of glad TAC's going to figure that out.
We have a lot of [inaudible]. Yeah, because it, that's, I'm, I'm, here for myself.
Well, that's why the pressure's not on you, and that's why I like TAC doing it. I think that's the only appropriate way.
Yeah.
And you may, they may ask you for insight as to the subject matter, but ultimately it'll be their decision as to whether to pay this, you know?
How they're going to do this, I have a lot of [inaudible]. Let them figure it out.
Okay. So, that is the recommendation here from TAC. The tweak, again, today, is just to reimburse these costs. I recommend that you all approve this policy, and I pray that we don't have to use it.
I make a motion with approval.
Motion for approval is made by Commissioner Parker. I didn't see who said second. Commissioner Parchman, second. Any further discussion on this? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, and Gary Lubas should be walking in the door, so we're going to jump on to the other typical meeting items. We'll skip number 14. Gary is going to be here, should be, there's, there's no executive session with Gary. We simply have, finally, the two parcels, 10 and 12, that he has referred to from time to time, they, that had the right-of-way, the boundary lines got changed, and it delayed the process of him getting appraisals. We finally have those appraisals done. We'll let Gary tell you about that. Item 15, then skipping... Motion to approve those reports comes from Commissioner Parchman. Second. Second comes from Commissioner Fitch. Anybody have any questions, comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item number 16, considering possibly approve the treasurer's report.
Make a motion to approve it.
Motion to approve that report is made by Commissioner Parker.
Second.
And second by Commissioner Parchman. Any questions or comments for Cheryl? All in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
I will pass these two reports down for your signature. Okay. Budget amendments. It is that time of the year when we do a little end-of-the-year housekeeping, and we essentially, in individual lines within budgets of each department, where we find that we have excess, or we have a little bit shortage, we don't want to leave any of those having a deficit balance. And so we find, hopefully, ways to shore those up, and we make budget amendments. And I have four pages of deep, detailed information. However, as a, the most important thing that you guys want to know is that none of these affect any of our contingency, none of it is new money, it is just adjustments within each of these precincts or departments. Is that correct, Barbara?
Yes, sir.
All right. So no new money, we're not dipping into contingency, and here we are, just a few days, and we've still got money in our contingency account that we did not need to use, so that's good. So let me tell you, just generally speaking, about the precinct one has some adjustments. We're taking monies out of other road materials where we had excess money, and we're allocating that out. $22,000 for the capital outlay for a shredder. We've added $2,000 into culverts and $5,650 for health insurance. And not that we have got extra people there, but as you'll recall, Commissioner Riddle had declined his health insurance. He was covered by Medicare, and we have a young Jeff Parchman now who does need that coverage, and that amounted to $5,650 of monies spent for hospital insurance that was not previously there. In precinct two, we're pulling money out of also other road materials, or we're putting money into road materials, and we're taking that from excesses in gas and oil, road oil, and shared equipment to the tune of $17,000. General County, these are all two pages of long, detailed description of taking money here. First, increases to various line items as listed due to staff turnover, increased number of retirees, IRS penalty decreases to line items with funds that will not be needed to complete the fiscal year. And these range anywhere from $785 up to telephone, we spent 8,200 less on telephone, 2,000 less on PC ORI insurance. What is that?
That's the fee that we used to have to pay when we were self-insured.
That we no longer have, okay.
Yes, sir.
$2,400 less drug testing, $3,500 less legal expenses, $4,000 less in county-paid life insurance, and we are dumping $11,800 into unemployment taxes. The next segment here increases to various line items due to increased translating costs and commitments, and a decrease to visiting judge line item because we didn't need that money there. That's a $900 adjustment there. Here's a fairly substantial one, increases to various line items due to increased costs and decreases to other line items. This is in the district court. We have, of course, increased our accounted, our appointed attorneys for indigent defense. We had to bump that up $28,000. We pulled that money out of CPS attorney appointments that were down, and a little bit out of juvenile attorneys' appointments. So all this has to do with appointments of attorneys for those that cannot afford it, but we were able to balance those within those various entities that needed those services. We have a secretary, this is in the county attorney, $750 adjustment between secretary salary and part-time salary. The county auditor, we've added $1,000 to professional fees and taken $1,000 out of travel and seminars. Not even going to bother with the $100 and the $25 and the $15 adjustment. In the sheriff's department, we increased medical transport up by $2,200 and pulled that out of telephone and utility bills. At the commissary store, we had increased sales at the commissary by $24,950, and so therefore, we made an additional transfer into the commissary fund. Lastly, this has to do with the elections. We took $3,000 out of part-time salary, and we put it into clerical salaries. This is to cover increased hours worked by clerical staff that we were able to pull out of the unneeded part-time salary. So once again, all that required no pulls from contingency nor any other general funds.
Make a motion to approve it.
And that motion to approve the budget amendments includes budget amendments number 2021-59, 60, and 61.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Fitch. All in favor, say aye. Item number 18, sign pay orders and approve payments.
Make a motion with fair bills.
Motion by Commissioner Parker to approve this two-weeks set of bills.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Fitch. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. I still don't see Gary. I'm going to ask for closing comments. We will not adjourn. We may end up taking a coffee break until Gary gets here. And again, for those of you that want to stick around and wait for Gary, there is nothing going to come out of this meeting other than him bringing, finally, the appraisals on parcels 10 and 12, which I see no reason we won't be approving. That's, again, he has not even had the dollar figure to go and negotiate with the landowner on these two parcels. Any closing comments, Commissioner Parchman?
I just want to send prayers out to the Harvey family. I didn't know if anybody knew that Jerry Harvey passed away. So just thought to prayers with the family.
Yep. Don't know Jerry Harvey, okay.
He's a barber, was a barber up here on Third Street for years. He worked out at TXU. He had the one over here, the bar shop over here on the corner over here in our building over here.
Huh, okay.
For a long time, too, before they moved up here.
Mr. Har, Jerry Harvey.
Jerry Harvey.
Commissioner Fitch.
I don't have anything.
I don't think I have anything.
I'd just like to invite everybody to, out to the fair this week. Going to be a busy week up there. We've got, starts Wednesday afternoon at 5:00, opening ceremonies and all start at 5:00 Wednesday afternoon, and I believe that's right, 5:00 or 6:00, I believe it's 5:00. But anyway, I'd just like to invite everybody to come out and have a good time.
Are there any changes this year as a result of, you know, we completely missed it last year, so we're hoping for a big event this year? Is there any COVID protocols, anything different in operations up there that we need to know about?
We've got some new sanitation stations that we're putting up and a few things like that. Nothing real major as far as changes or anything. The carnival's pretty much all the same and all of that, so everything is pretty well going good. We've got some of the same people that we had set up to come last year that just rolled over to this year for us. So the acts, we've got two on stage each night. I know there's at least two on stage each night down there as far as singing acts and whatnot. The, a lot of the others that were set to come last year are, they're coming back, so... But that's it.
Okay. Do we have flu shots this week or next week?
Yes, Friday.
Friday, flu shots, 8:30 to 10:30, reduced hours this year. Come and get them. Everybody's still recommending flu shots. These will be offered in the annex break room. If your spouse is also covered, bring them along. That will be done by Thurmans. That's this Friday, 8:30 to 10:30. Don't you miss it. Last week's update from Terry Scoggan at the hospital. Fortunately, we saw a few less people in the hospital. Dallas had been reporting some declines. We typically follow a couple of weeks behind, so we finally got those that were having to be set up and taken care of in the emergency room, were not having to be stored in the emergency room. They were either in ICU, I think there were a few in ICU, but at least the numbers showed some declines last week. That's about all I can tell you on that. Okay. Gary, you came in at just the right time. So I'm going to bounce back to the previous item, number 14, presentation of any items by Gary Luba with H.W. Lochner regarding right-of-way acquisition on the FM 1735 project. And we finally got parcels 10 and 12 done.
Yes, sir. Finally, it took a while to straighten the surveys, and finally, I think they did about the best they could do, but we're able to move ahead. And anyway, I just want to go over what those values turned out to be.
Can you kind of tell us how big, you're going to tell us how big these parcels were and stuff?
Yes, sir. Yes, parcel 10, it's .468 of an acre. And it is based on, well, 12,000 per acre. Let's see. Yep. So the land value at, you know, .468 of an acre, and this is for Walter Allen Jones. And I think he had sold his property to Shane Calhoun, but he reserved the right-of-way still in his name. So we're going to deal with Walter Allen Jones on the offer. So the land value comes up to 5,0616. The improvement value, which is bauxite fence and a septic system, comes to 4,500. And there's a, there's damages of, it's kind of, you got parcel 12, which is like a carve-out, and that's where a mobile home is, where Breda Lowery lives there. And so there are damages of $99,684 for a total value of $109,800 for that parcel.
What are the damages for? The, is that for moving of a mobile home? What is that for?
Well, it's, you pretty well got a damage out, the mobile home, because you're getting into the, you're getting into the septic, and she's not going to have enough area to put that back. So we got to pretty well, you know, damage that out.
That's not considered a relocation that's paid for by Techstock?
Yeah. I mean, she can, she can retain the mobile home for, let me see, hold on a second. She can retain the mobile home. Let me go to, this might give me some more information here. Okay, so because of that, basically, the manufactured home is, costs new, there's like $127,704 is the value, but it's 100% depreciated because of that situation of being damaged, not going to be able to live in that spot.
So it's a manufactured home? It's not a mobile home that they can pick up and move?
Yeah, I think they should be able to, I think they should be able to, if she wanted to maintain it and keep it, she could, or she could opt to, just depending on what the relocation comes out at, which we don't know that yet, we just got, we just got recently released by Techstock to move ahead. So she can, she can opt to keep that and move it somewhere else, or she can probably, you know, leave it behind, and if the market reflects a supplement, which we don't know until you start putting the calculations to it, she can move into a regular home, you know, she can take, take that and move it to a regular home, or keep her mobile home and move it to another piece of land.
Is that considered relocation in which Techstock pays some of that big tab there?
Yes, yeah. And here's the situation, I mean, she, since her mobile home is not actually bisected by the new line, I mean, that would be definitely a forced move, but since it's not, she can opt. I figure she's going to want to take advantage of relocation, but she doesn't necessarily have to because the house itself is not bisected. But it's the, it's the septic that can't go back.
Okay. All right. Thanks.
Okay. All right, so the other one, which is...
Hey, Gary, what was the total on that?
Uh, let's see, 109,800.
Okay. Does the owner of the manufactured home own the ground also?
No.
No.
She's got, she's basically, she does own property that's in the take, but actually her, her mobile home is probably still going to be on, on the land that Shane Calhoun owns now.
Okay.
You know, and anyway, I have to, have to kind of sit down with you maybe and let you look at the maps and what they came up with and why things are as they are.
Okay.
It was a tough appraisal assignment to get through, but they got there. So then here's parcel 12, which is actually the piece that Breda owns that's in the, in the new right-of-way, and that's .365 of an acre. Let's see, and it's also 12,000 per acre, so I guess by the time that, that the appraiser did this, there were maybe some newer sales on the market. So the land value there is 4,380. There's an improvement value of $7,035, which includes, you know, a drive area of paving, gravel, and asphalt, and you got a utility pole with the light, and then you have bauxite fencing. So that's, all those improvements are $7,035. There is damages of $1,428. Let me see what those are about. Let me see what those are about. I think what it is, yeah, I think what there is, is going to be a sliver of land associated with this parcel 12, and it's going to be absolutely useless, very thin, and so that's probably where these damages are coming from, this unusable land. The only thing you'd be able to do with it is for, you know, the adjacent owner to assemble it with his tract. So you got to pay him for that loss of value.
Okay.
And that's basically it. Unless y'all have any other questions or?
What was the total on that one?
Okay, total on that is a total of 12,843.
So at this point, you just need us to approve the completion of these two appraisals, and now begins the process of negotiation.
Yes, sir.
With the landowner, property owner.
Yes, sir.
All right. Is there anything else that you need us to consider in?
No, sir.
Today?
Mm-mm. Okay. This is it, these are the last.
Is this the la, are these the last two?
Yes, sir.
Appraisals are completed.
Appraisals are completed.
And how many of, are we 50% through the process of approval?
I've got some appointments, I'm getting lined up for other parcels, these to get signed, and I'm hoping to, you know, get that, which I think I can get those done this afternoon. And so, so far, I've got like nine of each signed, but this will be another, let's see, probably another six. And there are some that, I don't know, this Britta Lowery, I think it's going to have some, some kind of nasty title issues, like, I think it's maybe things that her dad, he's deceased now, but I think there were some judgments and things like that, liens that, you know, still outstanding. So, but other than that, I mean, let's see, hopefully I can get, let's see, I think five is what I'm, five, no, wait a minute. I think there's like seven of them I'm trying to get done today, which, which one owner has two parcels, another owner has two parcels, and another owner has three.
So that, that would put us up to what, 27, as you said?
Uh, there's a total, a total of parcels on the project, or?
Yeah, there's 30, what, 32?
32.
Two?
Right.
This will put us up to 27 of approval?
Let's see, I've got, I've got nine, so this will be another seven, so like 16 of them.
Okay.
And there's still some others that we, you know, like these two, I've still got to make the offers on.
Yes.
And there's some that I kind of waited because Britta owns these two, you know, eight and 12 is what she owns, so I told her just to, let's just put a hold on there so we can deal with them both at the same time.
Yeah.
And the same thing with, with, I guess, the Calhouns and David McNeil, you know, and then the Billie Jean Edwards and Geraldine. So, and there's, one of, yeah, they've, they've got a relocation, is they've got a tenant on the property that lives in the, I guess, a frame house, brown frame house?
Yeah, that used to be an old store.
Oh, yeah. So, but it's moving, still, I've been kind of pressing the title company and see if they can give me, you know, some closing statements so I can, you know, get funding requests into the county to pay for the closings. And so.
Well, all I know is we're, we're way ahead of Techstock. I mean, we're not holding them up.
No.
Because we're looking at probably, at best, late next year before any dirt would turn. They're, they're not even done with all their drawings yet, are they?
No. Yeah, and I, I was supposed to, I had a kickoff meeting with Techstock Thursday on the reload stuff, but we'd also talk about plans and things like that. And she's supposed to, I think it's Tanya Wiley, she's supposed to get us a schedule, and I think, I think she already has for David Ivins, and I'm trying to go from memory, but I think, I think it'll be summer before they get to like the 60% plans, maybe 30% by spring, 60% by summer. And then next, and then to be basically completely, I think they go to like 95%, and then they put it together with the, with the construction bid package, you know, and, you know, let that loose, you know, the letting's still scheduled for January 2023. I think it is on the tip for that, which is, or the stib, the Techstock, so they show that they do have those funds there for that month and year. All right, so.
Okay. Commissioners, we need to approve these final two appraisals for parcels 10 and 12.
Make a motion to approval.
Motion to approve, Commissioner Parker.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Fitch. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thus ends our meeting. Motion to adjourn, and we'll call it a day.
Make that motion.
Motion and second, Commissioner Parchman. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you, Gary.
Thank you.
Hope you have a productive, I hope you have a productive afternoon.